We're glad we have some students with us. Hopefully, they can teach us some stuff. Welcome to Adam, our newest member for joining us. Erin, glad you could be here. Pat indicated she would not be here. I think she's out of country, right? So as usual, let us begin. First up, public comment period. Who do we have signed up? Oh, public comment is first on the sheet. And then response and then minute. Hello, Caitlin. How are you? There's a mic somewhere for you.
Well, my name's Caitlin and I think I went to school here 100 years. It seems like I had the privilege to have some amazing teachers and have an amazing experience, but today I have a ninth grader at the high school. And I'm here as I'm a nurse. I work for the county and part of that work was with the mental health clinic and I know that the schools system is under, you know, has huge challenges. And there's a lot of stressors that have been exacerbated, I think, with from COVID. And as a county nurse, I'm aware of the limited resources we have, but I feel like during these times, I'm just here to advocate for Diane Cole's relationship, healthy relationship course for our young people during times where, you know, the social isolation, suicide, the mental health issues, addiction, all the issues that we're aware of. And I feel like I know the schools can't carry all the weight of life skills, but definitely, you know, communicating and having healthy relationships seems like a skill that to navigate all these challenges, including academics. Could be super beneficial.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you spending your time with us.
Yeah. Thank you for everything you do.
Anyone else?
Most of you know who I am, Diana Cole. I'm a marriage and family therapist. Also, I've been a student here a million years ago. And my daughters and I've been working as a marriage and family therapist still in private practice. Dealing with all kinds of dysfunctional relationships we're all aware of because we do not get an education anywhere in the schools about healthy relationship skills. And the health course does not address that either because they have so much other things that has to address. So I've been coming every month trying to help this happen so that we have prevention of depression and anxiety and suicide and addiction. And how to love, which we all want. So I'm just here to advocate again, maybe so as a teenager and we are aware now that there was a suicide just at Pointon Junior High this week ago. We know that the rate of suicide is going up and the rate of addictions among youths. So I can't say it enough how important it is. And I have an update, which I'm very happy to say, I talked to Senator Adabo in Albany today in person, finally, after many phone calls. Vivian Cook of the Assembly and Senator Joe Adabo are have put a bill on the legislature in 2017 to advocate social emotional learning. So it has gotten off the table somewhat, obviously through COVID. And he is now trying to get that back on with Vivian Cook. And have this as a very prioritized issue, as you all know, like Katie said. And you're all aware of that this youth are struggling. We need to give them the skills to talk about their feelings about their depression and anxiety and how to prevent that. So that's why I'm here every month. Thank you so much for
Thank you. For your persistent advocacy for our kiddos. All right. Curriculum responses. We might have a question for you.
Yes.
We might. I don't know, but Erin, questions, comments?
No, actually, just thank you for coming and speaking and your advocacy.
Well, Adam, since you're here. Anything to add?
No, no, I appreciate it too. I mean, especially as a psychologist that, you know, obviously mental health advocacy, but also programming in the school is really important. So I'm glad that you came also.
All right. Thank you. What I wanted to ask you, Caitlin, is, all right, so you have a baby in the system now. To me, baby. To him, I'm sure he's 30. Can you share your experience of what your child has experienced from the district in regard to social emotional learning and structures that could help him navigate his emotional status? Has he been exposed to anything in the curriculum or even in his extracurricular activities because they've received training too to help him manage the very things we're talking about?
Having the experience of being part of a team in athletics and especially where the coach is emphasizing, you know, I don't, the simple way to say it would be good sportsmanship, but in that I would think it would be like how to relate to people in a respectful, kind way, especially under the stress of community competition. So that's would be one thing that's been available through the school district that he talks about a lot. And I know it's made an impact on him. And but socially from his peers.
From, from as part of the curriculum, as part of a regular engagement with his teachers and other adults.
Not necessarily like curriculum wise, like I can't say like a certain course, but I know that some interactions he's had with teachers that have made really lasting impressions, like he'll talk to me about what a teacher has said to him, and I know it's made an impact just by the mere fact that he's sharing it with me. So there's one-on-one interactions. But I can't think of like a curriculum based information that he's come back and shared with me or I see impacting him beyond academics, like not for social relations that I can think of.
If you could, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you home with some homework.
Yeah.
You could talk to him about it. That'd be great because we need more people at this table who could inform us about what's actually taking place. That would just be great. And 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 we will accept whatever, you know, whatever the truth is about his experience. That's what we want.
I mean, and I remember like back, you know, like when you would read a book, right? And it would, you would have those discussions in class, like how did people relate to each other and what were the challenges and but I don't ever see him even bringing a book home. I don't even see I don't hear about those kind of social moral values connecting.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Oh, just the length, the social isolation with the social media and how it seems to have like intensified relationships in a way, but also they're like not really relating like on a human level. It's weird.
Right.
Now that's that factor.
Right.
Oh. Yeah, I mean, he talks about bullying and.
So let me just say that we often have we often receive mandates from the state, the state passed the laws. There are very few times that the state is ahead of quality educational institutions, right? There are very few times they're ahead of us here in Africa.
Very few times.
Few times they're ahead of us here in Africa. We tend to be in fact, once the legislative advocacy committee was formed, we tended to inform our local assemblyman and local senator about some deficits, which we had some success in pushing forward. And I say that to say we are sharing social emotional practices with our kids from kindergarten. So when Diana says that there will be a state law passed to integrate that, I don't think that's going to be an issue for us. My experience with what we've talked about is a very specific form of language, right? To give kids the language to express what may be difficult. And then we keep coming back to whoever had the best venue for that is a single class, right? So that's where we are. I don't know how we resolve that because our goal is to spread that far and wide beyond beyond the singleton, which will be which would target a small number of kids, even if it were made mandatory. So we will continue to work on this and figure it out. Mary and Lily and Dr. Brown are now teaching us just how much relationship material is embedded in Ruler and what we're planning to roll out, what we have begun rolling out already under that umbrella. We always hope that there's something that has to be better, but last night I don't want to leave you with the idea that nothing is happening here.
Yeah, I don't have that idea, but thank you for, and especially on the one-to-one really, I know how much teachers and staff give to students, I guess, you know, the nonviolent communication that Diana has included in her, the curriculum. So that would be like an example of a specific approach that teaches language to our youth that like a lot of times my son doesn't have the words to express. So he just says really kind of harsh, simple things because he's lacking, as you said, the way to express it. So.
But we will continue working towards.
Thank you.
Eldred, if I, if I may add into your comments, I just I don't, I mean, just today, the Surgeon General came out finally saying that social media is a profound risk of harm to adolescents. And so, you know, you can have these conversations about what schools can do. But if you look at the rise of depression and mental health issues and the beginning of social media and you see the years and the trends. I mean, maybe we don't have the research yet, but it's pretty, it's pretty much right there in front of us. I don't think we know the impacts of social media yet. And I think we really need to consider that as a society.
I'll just add one thing because the Surgeon General of the United States just last week was interviewed and said that we have a pandemic of loneliness. That's a quote by the Surgeon General. And how are we going to get around that is to have a course about how to talk about how we feel in a safe place. That takes long skills, long time of skill teaching.
All right. Like I said, we will, this is, this conversation will not end. It is we've all been recently made aware of yet again, of the importance of having healthy kiddos in our community. So it's not lost on us. And thank you for coming and thank you again. Yeah, I'm down for, I'm down. No, and I, I am supportive of everything that the state and the federal government does, especially when it comes with checks.
Well, and I hope, I guess, when I, when I share that, I'm not trying to put the blame on anybody, but we need more research. And we need supports to understand the effects of social media and need to understand that social media does force people to isolate because they're spending time on their phones. I mean, it's more complex than we even know yet because this is such a new form of communication. And I hope that, you know, that research comes out fast because we need it.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for staying. All right. Moving on, approval of minutes. Thank you, Chris. The minutes look fantastic. Erin, I don't know if you had a chance to see him?
I did. They're good.
All right. I love it when that takes 10 seconds. Now we're on to the thing that from which we learn the most, our professionals fooling us. Today's topic is going to be micro-credentially. And how else can we frame it?
And the identity portfolios that teachers are presenting this week and then again.
I love it. When I talk to other school boards, I can never say what you guys can say. I just say we do good stuff. All right, take it away. There you go. Can y'all see?
Oh, yeah. I call him Lily.
Yeah.
Hi, Lily.
Let's do that one. Have to use the microphones now.
Hello? Sorry about that, Lily. We just started and I was offering and framing around the portfolio presentations that are taking place right now. Is there anything you wish to add to that before we dive in?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. There is not much I want to add other than good evening. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for letting me join virtually for the second month in a row. Our kids, our tiny children have gotten us extremely sick as well. So my husband and I are both home today as well. So thanks for letting me join virtually. Hi, Adam, welcome. And I'm really excited to talk about this this evening. Mary Grover and Lisa Sahuza Bude have really done extraordinary work to get this culturally and linguistically responsive micro credential off the ground. And it's really exciting to get to see it really coming to fruition as it's gaining steam.
All right. So welcome, everyone. So we're going to focus tonight on strand one. Each one of these strands has an authentic culminating event, a portfolio to share, a presentation to make, and each of them are aiming to center student voice and feedback in their design. And as well, it's once teachers complete them, they can elect to be the facilitators. So it's teachers sustaining professional development. And I think that's, those two pieces are are important to highlight. So the identity strand started, I want to give a big shout out to Lisa Sahuza Bude, who began the outline of this five years ago. And four years ago, prior to COVID, we had the first cohort of teachers on the equity team, the district's equity team, complete the identity strand. And the anchor text for that strand is Why Do All the Black Kids Sit Together in the Cafeteria by Dr. Beverly Tatum. And the goal is for teachers to explore their racial, ethnic and cultural identity and how that shows up in the courses and the lessons and the classroom environments that they engineer for students. So once the, the group meets eight sessions, an hour and a half each week with reading and reflecting journaling in between. And then it culminates with a portfolio presentation, it's a 10-minute presentation where the teacher presents to a panel of other teachers. Last week was myself, Lily Talke, Lisa Sahuza Bude, two of the facilitators, and then community members who elect to join. So that 10 minutes to be succinct in explaining how your racial, ethnic and cultural identity is showing up in your craft of teaching is a challenging task to be concise with that. And for me, it's been a real privilege to see what teachers have been highlighting in their classroom and learn from them and how working through this credential has impacted the shifts that they've made and how they're setting up their classroom. So I'm going to pause for a moment because we have the rubric that we use as the teachers are presenting. We also, I do want to celebrate the collaboration with the Ethica Teachers Association around this. The, the visual in front of you has had many iterations and edits based on feedback. And the FAQ on the back is also a reflection of what we've, we've heard from and gotten feedback on. So before I share the rubric, are there any questions just on the identity strand piece, that strand number one?
Not a question, but a comment. So I just sent the group a summary of a student panel I attended on the 4th of April. That was attended by newest charter school students, LACS students and our high school students. And it was profound. I want to say that some of the more powerful things the kids said were about what they needed and they were looking for adults to be empathetic, adults to be supporters. They're, they're tired of this whole idea of, you know, you're on your own, get it, do the work. We had to do it. Your generation is weak, right? This whole idea of lack of empathy. They're done with it. And they should be because that was for, that education was for a different time, right? When you could lose your hand in the factory or whatever. So they're very clear about wanting to have more human teachers that really are there for them. And policies associated with that around homework and around and around block scheduling and around, you know, extending time for them to do the things they need to do. And it was just when you guys get to read it, you know, a lot of it will sound familiar, or you all been trying to get us there, but it seems like this is a we're coming together and the only questions they ask is how, how, how long? Right? Same question Martin Luther King asked 50 years ago. With all direct speed.
So I'm going to pass out two more handouts. One was the assignment for what the portfolio looks like for the strand. And then the rubric can give you time to look at it and we can, we can talk about how it looks like with the presentations. And I think, here's this one as well. So the presentations after, again, they're 10 minutes. So this past week, we've had about a dozen. And in June, we'll have around, around 24 more educators presenting at this moment in time in June over the course of two days. And this document is a reflection of, I also want to say, years of collaboration with the Equity and Inclusion Leadership Council. Laura Branca was the first facilitator of this identity strand work with the equity team. When I participated in it, she was our our facilitator. And I am going to upload an example of one of the portfolios for you to look at, but I wanted to get permission from the educator prior to doing that. So you can, you'll be able to see what it looks like. Some people have submitted a slide deck. Some people have submitted a podcast. Some people have submitted newspaper, like an article reflecting, writing about their classroom to walk you through what it looks like and how their identity and their awareness of their identity is impacting their teaching. All right. So you'll see in one of the documents, there's also a link. So what does it look like to, to be culturally responsive teacher and sound like in a classroom on the rubric? And that is Dr. Roberta Wallits' research is, is linked. And I have, I have a paper copy of that too. So as folks are pulling together their artifacts for their presentation. Last week, one of the artifacts was an educator had a picture of themselves as a fourth grader in their classroom. Their fourth grade teacher and a sign that said, thank you for being here today. And talked about how they felt a sense of belonging in their school culture growing up. And so having had that experience, they want all students to feel that. And so this is what they're looking for. And these are some of the instructional strategies they use to see if their students are feeling a sense of belonging. By asking directly at the end of the day and asking students to to share to share that anonymously or sometimes as a community. And so that's a a very specific example of what one artifact could look like as it's, as it's coming up. Another mention that I want to say is we have some educators who have read this text, Dr. Tatum's text multiple times. Maybe they read it as a high school student. Maybe they read it in, in teacher school. And maybe they're reading it now. And to share how the notes and their reflection of their identity has changed over time was very powerful to see three editions or two editions of the book and those notes and how they're talking back to the text shift. Which is why every time I read this book, I learn something about myself. And so that's another example of an artifact that was shared. I have to give a shout out to the educators doing this because many of them have said, this was really hard and I'm really nervous to present after a full day of, or week of, of teaching students and wanting to represent their work and their students. So that's, you know, we've been grateful for their time and effort. The presentations have been wonderful. As a school, you know, school board member, you're welcome to attend the panel.
You should have, you should have the board do that. I think, I think it's, it's interesting that you include culture too, because everyone, you know, the nation's on fire, right? About critical race theory. As a legally educated person, I still laugh that folks think this is what we're teaching elementary kids, but that's a whole nother conversation. I've had to face some of my own cultural issues in doing this work. Right? Extremely disciplined background. Not a lot of room for the feelings myself as a young person. So we all have things that we have to examine and then dispose of so we can. examine and then dispose of, so we can be present for these kids. It's not about how we were educated, it's not about how we were raised. We are not in a classroom with a, with a surface or an iPad. So I just wanted to say that it's way beyond just this, your skin color. It goes pretty deep. One thing I'm curious about is a question. Do you have teachers willing to share how their families became white? That is one fascinating aspect of this society, how you know, successive waves of people from A place came and gave up their traditions, gave up their last names. I mean, hell, Tony Curtis', his name is Michael Schwartz. I mean, you know what I'm saying? Half the people I grew up with thinking every one thing are something completely different.
So there's a continuum of the experiences and the presentations thus far where that has definitely happened. There are examples of teachers who identify as white as trying to center that experience through the novels that they're choosing as read alouds. And then the, how they know that their classroom is a cultural responsive classroom is the feedback that the students are giving them directly. Or that the caregivers are saying, my, my child is asking me these questions now. And I'm really glad you've provided a space to talk about it. Um, so that's one specific thing and seeing how uh educators are sharing some of their practices um at their home and recreating those in the classroom. So I walked into a classroom after um someone presented last week. And I was visiting their classroom yesterday and they have um a class fridge wall. And it's just a whole wall because a number of students said, we want, we actually um don't want to bring this work home to, and put it on that fridge to celebrate it. We want to keep it here to celebrate one another daily and see it daily. And and she had, had talked about that experience as a child, what went on the fridge and what, and what didn't. And the, and the conversation that what she's seeing evolve on the class fridge and what is put up is a reflection of a journey, not perfection.
Mary, um, so I'm trying to wrap my head around um what we mean by identity, because when you put racial and ethnic and cultural, I'm thinking about you know, what falls outside of that socioeconomic, LGBTQ, disability. But yet those impact our identity greatly, right? Um, are those like lumped into culture or are those left out? Or like, how do we consider that in our identity in this work?
Well, that's a really great question. So I would say they're definitely included when people put up how they're identify, you know, from an I Am poem, which is one of the activities to and including everything from uh I would say ability, what that looked like for them growing up, socio-economic stand, status is definitely part of that cultural identity and, and ge- geographically too. Um, that surfaces a lot, especially given the research that a large proportion of teachers teach a hundred miles or less from where they graduated. And so that was also a recurring theme as, as folks were presenting. Whether they grew up in a more rural area of New York, you know, because a city in central New York. Um, so.
To follow up on that, since, since we're asking adults who may not even have experienced freedom in that regard, as they were growing up, is gender orientation somehow picked up in this as well?
That shows up in, in the artifacts. Again, I'm excited to get permission and almost, you know, what I wish if I could do things differently and reflect, we would have someone present their portfolio to you tonight. Cause you would see um uh that's, that surfaced in a portfolio, portfolio last week.
So can you give us some examples of, let's not go the, all the way to exemplary, what's a accomplished example of an artifact that could show validation of a student's identity?
So an accomplished one example was um from this, this past week were poems that students had written celebrating their identity. They had done it three times this year. And they had kept them together so the students could talk back to see what they know about themselves and how they identify now versus how September. So another one was video embedded, uh kindergarten students answering the question, who am I with the, and the kindergarten kind of looking at the teacher like, you don't know my name? In disbelief and then um responding uh after two weeks of exploring their identity with, you know, I'm a, I am a friend, rock builder, magic maker, spaceship pilot. And it, some, so, so that would be an exa- an example of accomplished.
Great. You said there's going to be just want to make sure both Erin and I heard that, in case we can break away to check it out. You said there's going to be a presentation on a particular day from several books?
Yeah, yeah, I believe it's June thirteenth and fifteenth, we have um them scheduled and but what I wish, um, I think it would be beneficial at some point to recruit someone to come present here at curriculum, so you could see an example as well. Makun, do you have a question? I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I was actually just wondering, um, so do, will all teachers be taking part in this? Like across the district eventually?
Yeah, so that's a really, that's a great question. So we have really um focused on educators joining the district this year. We give an overview of it at new teacher orientation. We welcomed over a hundred educators. So maintaining that focus, we, that doesn't mean that teachers who are teaching now can't participate. The first cohorts were mainly educators in their first year at our district, but the spring cohorts were teachers who, the variety of years of experience.
So teachers will like choose to take part in this or like sign up or something?
Yeah, they sign up um and they can take it during the school year and during the summer. And as more teachers complete it, that we have more teachers who can be facilitators and offer it at different times uh during the school day.
Yeah, I have one, one more question, sorry. Um, you know, like, have any idea like what percent of teachers maybe across the district have taken part in this overall?
Oh yeah, I do. We actually have a heat map. It's one of my favorite documents. And so it shows by building and uh who's participated in what. Um, and we're thinking about how to be able to share that with educators so they can easily see what they've accomplished. So to date, I think when I looked, there was roughly um eighty, eighty-five educators who participated in the identity strand this year. He's, yeah, I, I would say this.
What percent is that? I was just.
Well, we have, we roughly have six hundred teachers. So rough, rough, so I would say it's a six, because we have uh twenty folks who've already taken it.
That just makes me laugh. I'll never forget uh Dr. Brown told us early on in his journey that he spent most of his day convincing people to do what they do not have to do. Right? That's a blessing and the challenge of bargaining units of six hundred teachers. Many of the excellent offerings that we have, we have to bring people to them. There's no mandates in this environment. Um for better for worse. So twenty percent is a solid number from my perspective. Mr. Guar. And we will try to uh, we'll try to increase that.
How long has it been offered? This is the first year.
Okay.
Officially. So the pilot was pre-COVID with the equity team and they are our bank, our uh four, four um folks out of that cohort took the facilitator training and became facilitators. And so they're offering these now. So from this cohort, you know, we would hope to get another six to eight facilitators to offer it at different times. Um, some departments, so department leaders have met, some department leaders are saying, oh, maybe we could do this as a department, although it's been um great to see the cohorts be pretty diverse as far as the age and discipline um that they're, they're teaching. So that's just something to that we're thinking about.
Our colleague has something she wants to add.
My back to everybody, hello. Yeah. Yeah. You betcha. Yeah, absolutely. I wish I could get used to this format. I'm still not quite used to it.
Alright, so we got the do you have anything else to share with us about this identity strand micro credential other than the rubric? I thought there was one other document, right? Ah, okay.
Is the, you know, what does it look like in your teaching practice and classroom design?
And what is, what is? Oh, I see. This is just a footnote.
I didn't catch that format and I apologize. Yeah, that's some of the questions.
Got it.
Hi, um, I have a question about the, I guess the, this micro credential thing. Um, I don't know if you mentioned it, but before the teachers get qualified, who will be hosting this workshop?
Oh.
Is it like something that it's hosted or are they just doing it like remotely on their own?
Oh, so it's facilitated by teachers. So the identity strand workshop, for example, the last cohort was facilitated by Alex Sher and Kellyanne Smith. So Kellyanne teaches at BJM and Alex is a social worker at Cuba Heights. Was that your question?
Yeah, so were those teachers the ones who like made this program or were they like taught by someone else?
Oh, great. Yeah, they were taught by Laura Branca and Kirby Edmonds. Um, designed it. There was a book read. Some of you in the community may have participated in that book read sponsored by Tompkins County Public Library in partnership with the Park, Park Foundation over, I think it was around ten years ago.
Was it uh the MLK book?
Yeah, yep. And so then we worked with uh Laura as the first cohort to pilot it. Um, and then took additional facilitator training, the teachers who wanted to become facilitators. Yeah, good question.
Alright, what are we, what are we looking at here?
Alright, so the other document, can I see it, Eldred, for really quick? So I refer to it by the correct name. So this is what, what does a teacher who is culturally competent and responsive look like? And of course, you know, we uh are evolving and using with intention culturally responsive. So I left that on there because that's a reflection of a body of work when there is a uh a vision that this is something you could complete or be done at. And we know that we're never, we're never done with this work. So um this is what we, is part of the book study. So after reading the text and doing the reflection questions, looking back at your lesson plans and seeing how this is showing up in your classroom practice. So I think that shift to seeing it in practice is really important, right? We want to talk about it and explore and reflect. We also want to have some act.
I can read it on this. I can, I can make it bigger. I don't need my glasses. Thank you, Mary. I mean, I, I think it's important to note that in our um, times when the, the curriculum committee members have gone to see this in operation within classes. The part that I took away with, that I was so pleased about is that we're not requiring teachers to know what they don't know. Because it's impossible to know all of the circumstances of the kiddos in front of you. What we're requiring them to do is create space for the students to share what's going on in their lived experience. And then make some connection to the curriculum, make some connection to the real world as they see it. Make some connection that does not lose the student. Uh, I'll give you this famous example. I've said this. I've said this in very large rooms. I was in fourth grade in the South Bronx. My neighborhood was in flames. I'm literally watching buildings burn right outside my classroom. And my teacher proceeds to walk us through a whole unit about the Russian Potemkin village experience. Where Russian citizens built fake facades of pleasant life. So the queen could travel the countryside and not know what was happening to her own citizenship. Within the buildings, within the windows of many of these abandoned structures in my neighborhood. The city was expending millions of dollars to have artists paint fake life. So you'd have wooden placards of cats and, and a grandmother and, and a flower pot in the window. And if you wasn't buying a highway, you wouldn't know every single one of those buildings had been torched. These are huge structures. These are not brownstones. These are very large buildings. And I remember that was one of my first moments of absolute academic disconnect. Right? It's clear to me that my teachers cared deeply for us. I'd even say loved us. They were all white, but I don't think anyone was doubted whether or not they were there for our best interest. But this teacher in that moment clearly had no idea what we were experiencing. And if I had challenged her, I had no, I didn't have the very miniscule emotional control I have now. It might not have gone well. So you know, that, that's, that's, that's one tiny example of my singular experience. But we have kids experience this from their perspective every single day, right? And we could never know all of them. So I respect when we see teachers creating space. Right? See where the kids want to poke, see what they want to explore and then and then run with it, run with it in a way that allows them all to participate at a very high academic level. That's the goal. That keeps them engaged. If you want them to be ritualistically compliant for the next one hundred years and get awards for that, fine, that's, you know, that would be what we do, but we have a long track record of seeing where that leads in this country. Lily, anything to add?
I am really thrilled to see where this is going to go and continue to go. I think the work that our educators have done thus far with the identity strand and with the micro credential in general has been pretty extraordinary. And I know many throughout our, our state are really curious about it and really excited about the work that we, we have begun. Um, I'm also excited about its evolution. Like Mary said, our, our language, our strategies, our, our concepts of what needs to happen are going to evolve and shift and they have to. So I think this is an excellent foundation and I'm looking forward to see what happens next.
This is not class. You don't have to raise your hand.
So I just, I just had a question about, um, this, um, I guess, paper, um,
Doctor, Doctor Wallets, uh, what it looks like, what a culturally responsive classroom looks like.
Um, so I have like a lot of like very different classes, right? And I think much of this kind of seems targeted more towards my like social studies and English classes, like discussing like books and, um, and literature and, and textbooks. And I have, I guess, several classes that I haven't read a single textbook or a book or like really any piece of literature this year, like considering like my math classes and like physics classes and stuff. And I was wondering in these situations, I guess, how, how would these, these kind of ideas apply?
Oh, that's a, that's a question. So, oh, go for it, like.
Um, as, as someone who also gets to oversee mathematics, teaching and learning in the, in the school districting, I get to work a lot with the fabulous math and science teachers who support our young people every day. There are a ton of connections and ways in which we can create more culturally responsive mathematics classes and science classes. Um, I don't want to put one of our board members on the spot, but there is an excellent, very concrete example that, um, Eldred may be willing to share, um, and, uh, but also may not. Um, but there are, um, there are a number of ways in which we've worked to create and cultivate a more culturally responsive, especially math classroom, right? So in terms of our mathematics, de-tracking process, that has been really, really key, right? To create heterogeneous groupings across race, gender, socio economic status and all categories of quote unquote difference. That's been really, really important. That was like a foundational step for us to take in order to have more culturally responsive math classes. Because I'm not sure if you knew this, but before our higher level mathematics classes, um, the data had indicated that they were tracked by both race and class until we, um, engaged in the de-tracking process. Um, and then there's, um, there's a lot of, um, older research and, and emerging research um, around the ways in which we teach, teach mathematics as, you know, one right way. This is the, um, you know, this is the, the only way to complete or solve equations, um, or to demonstrate mathematical understanding. Um, and so we've worked really hard to open that up in a lot of ways. And also, um, again, another foundational element is to educate young people or about mathematicians and scientists from a variety of cultures, not just, uh, Western or white European um, thinkers who have certainly been a part of the, you know, have done great work as well. And but we've tend to, we've tended to center, um, the, the stories and histories of those folks. And so we're trying to widen that scope as well.
I'll, I'll, I'll share, you know, the story of my experience in the math class with you guys offline, but suffice it to say, a lot of the equations that you learn in algebra and geometry, it's been a known fact for a pretty long time that those were not actually created by Greeks. Definitely not later come Europeans, right? Renaissance, it took place a long time after everybody else had their act together. Zeros and Arabic number, there's, there's a thousand ways to introduce uh, uh, thoughts on those subjects that are not text based. That, um, right now, for as long as we've all been alive, it's not our fault. Have been driven by Eurocentric respect.
Um, yeah, so I also had a question, um, for all of these, uh, goals, I guess, would the teacher be like leading their own, um, like ways of doing this or will there be like additional support from the district?
Oh, at the base of the, the foundation are the culturally responsive teaching strategies through Dr. Shrocky Holly's center. So that's a binder study that is available, but is also highlighted. We can highlight in staff meetings, here are some of the instructional strategies you can use. Because that, but you're asking a really concrete question. So how do we make sure people have the resources and experience it before they're trying to do it? Because it's, it's hard to do something and create something you've never experienced. So it's got to be integrated into the, everything we're doing from staff meetings to maybe, you know, even, even some of our boardman, board meetings, I would say, curriculum committee, some of these instructional strategies, but you know, call and response that's, that's noted here. Or your question in math class, I loved working with a partner when I was doing math and learning math. Some people like to work individually. Some people like a bigger group or they like to hear it three different times because there's three different ways that it was solved within the class. And I remember when I was teaching, I would hear, you know, one third of the class go, oh, I get it now. And then someone else would explain it a different way and another third would go, oh, that's how you do it. So those ways in which we're allowing teachers to see each other, teach and celebrate it is going to help with the application of this.
Grace, I love your questions. Your questions are, you're saying the same thing, right? Who's teaching the teachers? Are we allowing people who don't know what to do and to continue to harm kids? That's really what you're saying, right? We've asked those questions a lot. So the way this district has tried to get to those six hundred, uh, teachers plus the additional six to seven hundred other staff members, we have experts coming and training. And then the people who volunteer for that training and evidence competence become trainers. I, I'm not sure we certify those people other than, you know, the attempts here. But, uh, these, these, the, the Texas training we're talking about are pretty darn intense, right? The, uh, TCIS, I remember sitting through some of that and I had, I got a headache. Couldn't, I couldn't understand the words coming out of that guy, that guy's mouth. And like I said before, yeah, we are not a, uh, a, we're not in a situation where we can mandate these kind of instructional techniques. So the best model that our professionals have presented us with is this model. And the folks who come in to do these initial trainings are globally recognized, not nationally. How long has Shrocky Holly been working with this district now? Ten years at least, right? Uh, someone had a, their own school out on the West Coast, so they may not, they may not all be trained by the time you walk across the stage, unfortunately. But we are working on it.
That's really good to hear. And I have one last question. Um, I was wondering, um, if administrators and like board members, uh, will they also be part of this training?
Yes, definitely for administrators. So we're finalizing an updated onboarding process and mentoring program for our new administrators. And as part of that, all new administrators to ICSD or administrators who are new in, in their positions are going to go through actually all of the strands of the, of the micro credential as well. And there are educators, so you know, Mary has talked about, uh, teachers leading this. There are also education support professionals who have participated and folks in a, in a wide uh, range of roles in the, in the school district.
Awesome. Thank you.
I just had a question. Do you, are there any classrooms that we could go in like, let's say like in the middle school or the high school, a math class? Just as an example, because we're using math as an example, where we could come in and see what it would look like in a, like an algebra or trig classroom.
Can I answer it? Alan, we've been on the road, uh, visiting classrooms for probably seven years now. Instructional rounds, we call it. Curriculum committee steers it, but we always invite all of our colleagues. And then afterwards, after we see the, the work in action, we invite those teachers and their department chairs, our administrators to the table. So they can basically tell us how we're in the way as board members and what they would need to expand the net, to expand the reach. So join the curriculum committee, hit the road.
I will.
Hit the road with us.
That's why I ran for the board.
Mira has a question. Oh, Mary, you're, you're, you're going to be the last scholar to ask a question. We're over time, but we're not going to stop here. You sure? All right. Our presidente has arrived and reminded us we're over time. So we're going to bring this meeting to a close. Thank you all. It was fantastic.